This conference will now be recorded.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We are about to begin our meeting. Do we have any volunteers on the prayer?
So, Lord, we thank you this day and we thank you for the blessing we have to be here to do the county's work as you see fit. Will be with us as we make the decision for the citizens of the county and for the best interest of everyone. We ask all this in your most precious name. Amen.
That's outstanding. Join me in the page of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May it be seen. We have before you a proposal agenda. What's the agenda for?
Do you have any?
I don't have any on that.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion.
Jimmy, I do. I'm sorry, I do. We need to discuss the proposed ordinance regulating cryptocurrency mining facilities.
Dave, you have anything?
No.
Ken?
No, sir.
Eugene?
No.
Tony?
No, sir. Well, Jimmy, I moved it. We approved the general addition.
I second it. It has been motioned second, all in favor by the show of hand. Okay, that motion carries. Old men have mailed and emailed to all of us. What's the pleasure of doing?
I second it.
There has been motion and second, but we vote on it until we have a discussion on it in the old minute. A correction. If not, all in favor by the show of hand, that motion carries. Mr. Stevens, on you.
All right, sir. We've got a little three to budget. We need to have a brief budget work session at the end of the meeting. Move on to Alvin Power. The bridge on the road, on Bowen Road at Sandy Mount Creek, we discussed it several times. And just to remind y'all where if you go out by it on Highway 27, like you're going to Hawkinsville, cross I-75, Bowen Road is the first paved road to the left. And the bridge they're talking about is right, right there. DOT has been identified that by the state is needing to be replaced. They tried it through what they called their low-impact bridge program a couple of years ago. Due to some environmental issues, it didn't qualify for that program, so they're trying to go through another program now. And they are, the short version of the story is they're requesting a letter of support from the county for the bridge replacement and a commitment of $50,000 to go toward the project. Today we do, but we had budgeted $50,000. The state on the proposed bridge replacement on Bowen Road, the state is requesting a letter of support from the county and a commitment of $50,000.
What's the total cost?
I can add that to the number.
Several million. Let me see if I can find that latest.
Can any of our future L-Meg money be used for this?
Row.
Yeah.
While you're looking for that, Steve, when they did the overpass, there was, I was not privy to it, but there was talk about possible help to the county based on
I think they took, I think there was a consideration, Mr. Casey, that we didn't oppose them putting in a temporary bridge. We didn't require them to put a temporary bridge.
Yeah, all that statements.
Right.
Yeah.
And also, we tied it at the same time with the inconvenience of that overpass issue when the truck hit the one at exit 117 right through there. Those citizens in that part of the county were inconvenienced twice in that same period of time.
Yeah, so we need to bring that to the forefront of our discussions. I would, I would say yes, and then, and then when they start that project, that's when I would have that discussion.
Right.
I think as a county with them.
Right.
And
because it's in kind.
That's right.
Because we lost fire protection capacity, EMS capacity, as well as
It was a big inconvenience.
Our citizens, our farmers, had to spend more fuel and time and
Trying to get to the gen and handling from that far to county.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Oh, what about the other bridges on Heath Road and other bridges? They have a different program? We're not going to have to dish out no money when they start fixing those over.
Don't know. The Heath Road Bridge isn't as far along in the process, so I don't know.
Okay, I thought it was farther than this one. Is that?
I don't think so. I've got to
This one was on tap the same time the one was replaced on
Charlotte Road. Was it?
And what they did is they shifted it from the what was the term they used, Steve?
The low-impact bridge project.
Because it didn't impact so much and it would not take as long to do the project. But it exceeded the amount of money because of all the studies they had to do. So they kicked it to the other bridge program and they had to get in line when that happened.
Mr. Casey, that, that term that someone came up with, low-impact bridge, that was because but whoever came up with that term at the DOT or the legislature or whatever, they had another bridge that they wanted done closer to their house, is what I think.
Probably two.
So that cost 3.4 million?
I saw two numbers there. Yeah, I think they initially estimated it to be the 3.4 million. Now that they've done some more engineering, they're projecting cost to be the 4.1 whatever.
Says the county's response is requested by March 19th.
Yeah, we, we missed that.
I'd ask that we at least table this until we final, look at the final on the budget.
Bring it back up.
Let's make, let's make a note to look at this in the
Two weeks or more.
No, no, I I don't, I mean, I think when we see the, the numbers of the last budget along with the income report we received, we, let's see if we can't put it in the in the budget.
This is still an option, like Eugene said. You're talking about almost $5 million compared to $50,000.
I don't know. Yeah, that's a small piece of the 4 million, but still, like he said, what happens if they come back? Alligator, Heath or Alligator or whatever it is up there. Let's just
I would not be surprised if they don't start requiring some local investment in bridge projects.
Let's look, see if we can
As with the LRA money.
And can that be used? That's what I
Yes.
Can that money be used for this?
Yeah, I would, I would feel like it could. I don't know that much yet, but
I would, would that be what we're looking at?
Well, now, the LRA money is not guaranteed every year.
Right.
We've already, we've already designated the projects for the 25 LRA. We have not, we have, we are eligible now for 2026 regular L-Meg. It's time to submit those projects.
We did not, we didn't suck that up.
We have not committed any of that money.
We got the distance and the other that we did on that. So maybe this could be part of an L-Meg project.
It could be.
What did they give in the past? I'm just trying to see.
In for what?
The LRA, the project that we submitted and we got approved for.
It was wrong, man.
L-Meg. All right. All right, I understood the question. Now, for 24 L-Meg. Okay, what's, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't understand the question. What? The LRA money.
Yeah.
Like for which year, 25 or 24?
We're trying to figure that they've been getting.
Okay, for 25 LRA. For 25 LRA, Dewey County was eligible, $900,000. Okay. 24 LRA. Dewey County.
Almost same.
$891,000. So that's
I don't believe there'll be another one next year because all the state offices have been put on notice to hold the line on schedule. The rest of this budget, you can take the next based on what the GFC shakeout of the federal.
I figured that's what it was going to start, focusing on this program, see here.
The LRA was a good bonus one. That guy has a lot of road that we
Yes.
I mean, that was bonus.
But it looked just like, like they all
All right, so we're just going to take no action on this at this
I might say the final of the budget and then decide that could go into the L-Meg if we can't get it out of the budget.
We already missed March 19th, so
What's the next date?
Yeah.
They, they got another date? Says they don't miss that date. They don't
They're just asking, they're just asking for a letter and a commitment. They ain't put a deadline on their question yet.
The table is going to be all right with the, with the board.
Yes. Okay, Island number five, the Clinton Main Society. I, after the last meeting, I sent lay out with Clinton Main Society an email. The purpose of the email was to inform the Clinton Main Society of the county's desire to terminate contract and lease between Dewey County and the Clinton Main Society. The contract dated August the 12th, August the 20th, 2012. Section seven of the contract allows for an agreement to be terminated by either party by giving the other party 60 days' notice. And the county intends to terminate the contract September 30th. So that's providing the, given the more than 60-day notice required by the contract. And she replied back, "We understand. We will be out by September 30th."
Be out like out, out? Well, then is that about trying to read it from?
That is the response I got. We will be out by September 30th. All right, okay, Mr. Chairman, it's 9:15. Mr. Felton is on the agenda. Mr. Felton, you here?
Yes, sir.
All right, come on up. Have a seat.
Good morning, good morning.
Morning, morning.
Yeah, you sit right there, be fine, and we'll start your five minutes.
Yep, it's what you figured it might be.
Good AM commissioners. I am Andrew Felton. I stand before you today as a regular taxpayer here and leader of a local nonprofit serving the city and the county, not in anger, but in deep disappointment and reflection. To quote Dr. Martin Luther King, "The day that we sit silently about things that matter today that we, our lives, end, we're very much alive in this room, so that means that we're able-bodied and we can speak on and make decisions, especially when the rules of law are laid out before us and that they can't easily be interpreted without legal ease." Well, first begin with myself personally. In previous agendas, my name was brought up while I was serving on the Board of Education here on multiple occasions for my name to be raised by a personal request from the leaders of the DBHDD. My name was withheld without justification, without reason. It just was stated to me and phone calls, "Hey, your name's on the agenda." For some reason, the chairman didn't call it or raise it or question or for the vote. My history and background is in mental health. Coming from here, a product of here, a product of D-4 Valley State University. Over $3.5 million in federal mental health funds and support for the reduction of violence in schools, et cetera, things that I've written to include Dewey County in through my 20-year tenure at D-4 Valley State University. No explanation from my home people who refused to raise my name with prejudice and without explanation. This is no place to execute your personal vendettas from threatening the Board of Education when I was there on behalf of your seat and your title to dictate our decisions. That's not how politics should work. That's not how this body should allow individuals to act individually and pluck. That's horrible practice. That's poor practice. I, nor my mother, nor my brother, the great Doctor Tony King Senior, attempted to get your best friend fired. That wasn't a work of ours. They since have come to know that. They have called and apologized to me for how they treated me on behalf of that, so it's about time that you join suit. Now, the current status of this BOE maker, the current status of the Board of Education, as you can see here, these are our status cards. I was the District 2 seat holder and I am still officially the only and last person to live in District 2 to serve in that capacity. I, my school District 2, that's me, the candidate who attempted to run legally, her district as identified by voters registration card, District 2, the candidate who now sits in that seat, their district is District 3. There are two representatives from District 3. No representative actually officially living in and representing District 2. I have a problem with that, but we want to let the state handle it. You're the local entity that that organization falls upon. They're under your umbrella, under your office. Here, a letter that went out in March, I believe, before, two months before the individual qualified, so the individual had to lie under application. This letter is right here from the, from Ms. Bernetta states that, "Hey, you were notified that you no longer live in District 2. The lines have been redrawn and under the great Governor Kemp, you no longer reside there. This individual was allowed to still qualify. This individual was allowed to still run illegally according to the lines that were passed up from this to the state. Your lines, your lines, but you all sat silently. We're going to let the state handle it. We elected you for something so clear, written so clear, so clean, for you to be passive about it. Now, my background in nonprofit and grants, roots, management, growth and creation, I'm not here to threaten you, but if I do put my boots on the ground to get decision-makers here at these seats that you now sit at, I will make it my business. You all need to start doing what we voted for you to be here to do, and that's to make decisions that are based on the people's needs, not your personal vendettas. And just in continuation for my former colleagues that sat on the board with me who have been replaced, this is a sample ballot from the March vote about the splash. ABM.
Your title, Tim.
Thank y'all.
Okay, get back to the agenda. Okay. Okay, we were, took care of number five. On number six. We'll, we'll have a zoning here and public area at 9:30, so we'll need to that's just a few minutes off, so we'll skip that item for right now and move on to item seven. The courthouse elevator. Got noticed that the state of Georgia has adopted a new elevator code that requires a door lock monitoring system to be installed on every elevator in the state of Georgia. The door lock monitoring system is basically an auxiliary safety system designed to ensure that the elevator will not travel until the doors are securely shut. There are primary systems already in place that also do this, but the state wanted this secondary system installed as well. Okay, make a long story short. Come on, man.
We had to do this at our condo building and we all, we were relieved that our elevator could actually be done fairly cheaply. Is that the process here?
What's on your definition of cheaply?
Less than $50,000, I think. Less than 25.
Build a bridge for $50,000.
And we could get over it.
$10,370.
Well, that's, that's, that's
State of, state of Georgia project.
I think that's based on the age of the elevator because I think, I think we paid for two elevators in Atlanta that are roughly the same age, maybe. We, we paid like $6,000 for each.
Anyway, just want to tell them that
How many is over there?
Just one.
Just that one?
Yeah, just one. Doesn't appear we got a whole lot of
Right, well, that ain't, yeah, we don't have a lot, but what's it? Ain't got one floor. And I'm going to put it up again.
But do you want to be in the elevator and it go from floor one to floor, floor two to floor one? Free fall?
Well, you said block. Yeah, that, I got, I got missed. What you mean?
And it, I don't
Some, some of the old elevators years ago, the, they would, they would get like halfway to a floor and they would open and that sort of thing and people would fall down the shaft or get stuffed or whatever.
It's a safety, it's a safety issue, I think. That's way cheaper. That's way cheaper than a lawsuit, so. Okay, we'll move on. I'm just letting y'all be aware that that's coming. We have a need to have a brief executive session at the end of the meeting. Number nine, the River Valley Regional Commission has inquired if Dewey County wants to apply for a 2026 Community Development Lot Grant. The maximum amount you can apply for is $1 million. A $1 million grant would require a local match of $47,500. If we want to go after a CDBG, they requested an answer from us by August the 1st. And they sent this little brochure out that I sent out to y'all earlier with some key points. For CDBG, for CDBG projects, 70% of the households in the target area must be low-income. 90% of the households need to be surveyed. Door-to-door survey is the most effective. They need good photos and documentation of the problems to demonstrate the need. County and city needs to be in good standing with DCA and all its reports. Dewey County is. RVC application fee is $500 to rewrite, to rewrite an application, $750 to write a new application. Project types are water, sewer, street drainage, buildings and housing. Housing must be 100% owner occupied and low-income, up to 12 units per application. Housing slash multi-application work product fee is $1,050 per house, non-reimbursable. I'm assuming since we don't as of right now, we don't have any identified areas of projects, I think it would be very difficult for us to meet August 1st deadline.
And if we did the housing, which is what we've typically done, are they saying it's $1,000 per house we would have to pay? Am I reading that? Non-reimbursable, somebody's got to pay it. Normally, they, they do it upfront as reimbursed out of the grant if they get the grant.
Can't answer that question.
Well, let me ask you. I, I know about the water sewer, we can't get, the one that the guy wrote up before, use that as
That was a chip grant, not a CDBG grant.
Can you use the same information?
I don't know.
You said, "We have to get this information and submit to them when they come and do this for their"
We got, we got this after our last board meeting. And now they won't
The question is, do we have, the question for the commission, I think, is do we have time to even make a valid response before August 1st? I think the chairman's question is a valid question. Could we use a former grant? I think the manager's response is it's a different type of program. And I want to add a little bit of information that I received yesterday afternoon with, we were having a meeting in Leesburg with city and county people going over our comprehensive plan. And we had a group coming in out of Atlanta called the Forsight Group, and this is their specialty. And they were talking about that they had to reword everything they had because of the directives coming from Washington and certain words are bad words now. And I was sitting right next to Paul Fryer, who's a lawyer from Bainbridge, who is the field representative for Congressman Bishop, and he reached around and looked over at me and says, "Do you have the word?" He said diversity. And he said, "Anything that has diversity in it." So if you put in, if, if that old grant had something about, "We want to celebrate this, or we want this because it's a diverse park," that's a buzzword that would kick it out at the federal level. Now, this is a state level, but it's coming down.
I don't think he's talking about using the grant. He's talking about using the addresses that we, the houses that he had in the previous
Oh, not use the same grant.
Not the grant, just the
The information that was, that the target area is that
Right, just the areas.
I would say we can't use the same, if we use the same grant, even reworking it, we've got to be very careful about what words we use because
We don't want that grant. It didn't make it.
Right, right.
Two years in a row. Two years, we weren't new grants.
And it had to be because, from what I learned when I went down to the guy, it was called a word. It is how you, it is how you write it up. It, it, it's what determines what it do.
Yeah, I don't know that we're going to have enough time to get it done. When did we get this? Just last week?
We got it, it's after the last board meeting.
Well, I've always been told chip is easier than the
Chip is, chip is tremendously more easy.
Tony, did you see where, you know, Billy got the chip?
Chip, chip will have mobile homes, isn't all the stick?
Y'all asked me questions, I don't
I love the chip.
I'll get with River Valley. I will get with River Valley and I'll get with River Valley, I will get with River Valley and see what we can possibly do.
We want to be active on these, I think, even if they're sending, they sent us this, would you say, two weeks ago? Less than two weeks ago, and they want it by August first, and we're gonna get active and actually have a chance of these. We're gonna have to find another path, and, you know, I, I don't think, I think they're trying, but I.
They're not the answer.
They're not, they're not there yet.
No, they haven't been in this business long enough.
The other thing that was interesting that came out of that conversation is that there was a discussion amongst the people that kind of were in the know on this about AI. And how much AI is being used, and, and they were looking at the, particularly the definitions of the comprehensive plan, which we have one here. But they look at the comprehensive plan from ten years ago to the one that they're proposing now, how they were tweaking the words. And I was wondering why they were doing it just like that, but they, they, their explanation was if you have the wrong outdated language in there and that comprehensive plan goes into something and goes to this and all that, AI is figuring it out and kicking you out based on whatever algorithms put in the program before you can get to humans, what they're saying. I don't know that, I'm not part of that decision making, I'm just letting you know that there's a new world out there.
All right, item number six, we have a public hearing scheduled for nine thirty. Or a zoning request. Mr. Gabriel Eric Phillips requests that parcel seventy-four dash one D be changed from commercial C two to agricultural to allow the construction of a home on the property. The location is one thousand and seven Northern County Line Road. And that property. I don't think Mr. He wasn't expecting to be able to be here today to get off work. Okay. This is high, this is I seventy-five, this is the Dooley Houston County Line Road. This is highway forty-one. This is the parcel we're talking about right there. One and a half acres, I believe is what he said it was. And to show you the current zoning. All this in red is zone commercial. It got zone commercial when the zoning, when it first went into place. And at that time, the planning commission that was in place at that time just had to I'd say, they, they, they said, well, this looks like a good area that would be good for commercial development right north of the city between I seventy-five and forty-one. And it made sense. But, but by it being zone commercial, you cannot get, you cannot build a residence, get a permit to build a residence. A residence is not a allowable use in a commercial zone. So that's the reason, he's wanting to build a house there, and that's why he's requesting that it be rezoned. The, the this matter first went before the planning commission, they considered that this past Monday at their meeting. They held a public hearing on it. Mr. Phillips was present to speak in favor of it. There were no one there speaking in opposition of it. The planning commission voted unanimously to recommend that the county commissioners approve it. For all practical purposes, all that area is still ag. Purpose, so. He's wanting, it's, it's zone commercial, but in reality, there's no commercial activities being conducted on this all ag. There's pasture here, and this is farmland here, being farmland. So is there anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Because Mr. Phillips is not here, I'm assuming. Is anybody here to speak in opposition to this rezoning, requested rezoning? Here in nine, we will close the public hearing at nine thirty-five. All right, Mr. Chairman, then the floor is open for a discussion by the commissioners and our motion. It's right here. It's Mr. Phillips's grandparents.
Was that, wasn't that where the cell phone tower?
They.
Why we rezoned it?
They, they got a conditional use. To, on C two. On C two.
The one we rezoned, that's where they got the conditional use for the.
For the cell tower. But then since Mr. Mr. Phillips stated on behalf, it was his grandparents that got the, that were proposing going to get the cell tower. But the company that was interested in building the new cell tower has since backed out. They're no longer, no longer interested in the cell tower there.
That might be. They changed, maybe, okay.
Yeah, that. I don't pick it up till.
Mr. Chairman said that might be, I make a motion that we approve it, uh, zoning change.
It has been motioned, and said. Do we have any other discussion before we? If not, all in favor by the show of hand. And that motion is.
Okay. Then in regard to the item I added, the currently are considering an ordinance regulating cryptocurrency mining facilities. We, upon reviewing. This was discussed Monday night with the planning commission. And there's some interest in maybe going visit some, some facilities like this. And in reviewing the proposed ordinance, we have some questions regarding it, and let me try to pull that up right quick. In the proposed ordinance, it says, operators of these type of facilities shall not call, allow, or operate any source of sound which creates at an occupied residential building blah, 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 a sound level that exceeds a daytime continuous sound level of fifty dB. Okay. Well. I went and I have purchased a sound level meter.
Did they call it ten thousand?
No, sir, it did not. But in this room, with me not speaking, it's forty-five dB.
What? This room?
This room. Because of air. When the air finister turns off, it goes down to thirty-five dB sitting in this room.
You ain't making no sounds, so how could that be?
I take this outside, standing on the sidewalk with no traffic by. About forty. A car just rides by, it goes up sixty dB. But then, more importantly, so I'm, how are you going to determine that that, that noise is a result of that? At my house, my house is probably about half a mile from there. I haven't done, I ain't, I'm just now reading the instructions, I have to figure this thing out. But I'm sure there's, there's gonna be quite a bit of time, and there's more than fifty dB in my house. Just from the traffic riding by or trains riding by, so. I don't know how much. Anyway, we've contacted several folks, wound up talking to the planning director with River Valley Regional Commission. And they don't, they don't know anything, but they know a director, a former director over in, over around Statesboro that has done a lot of research into this. There in, and he was not available yesterday. We're gonna get with him. Get him to review this proposed ordinance. They suggest that we maybe the board adopt a mor, pass a moratorium on any permits for cryptocurrency mining facilities or up to ninety days to give us time to do this research. So yes.
I, I was just sitting there thinking, I know in, in Cordia. I don't know which factory it is down there, but you can hear it all over Cordia. I know the decimal, gotta be, the council is banging and roaring sounds and all that council, I don't care where you go.
According to Google University. What dB, DBA is too loud, not decibel, DB, but DBA is too loud, and we're looking at, DBA is the standard we're looking at here, right? It says, sounds at or below a seventy A weighted decibels or DBA are generally safe. Loud or repeated exposure to sounds at or above eighty-five dB can cause hearing loss. Here are some decimal ratings for common sounds, a normal conversation is sixty to seventy dB. And let's see. A fifty-two dB dishwasher is generally considered quiet. Fifty-two. Uh, most modern dishwashers fall in the range of thirty-eight to sixty-two dB, I must have a sixty-two one. Um, and a fifty-two dB is the lower end of that spectrum. So it's a difference in what's the actual sound on the decimal and what's the perceived human sound on the DBA, whatever that means.
Yeah, and this meter.
DB and a DBA, the same thing?
No, a DB is the decimal that you're thinking of from physics in high school or whatever. And DBA is the new measure or the, or the more scientific measure of what the perceived sound is.
And there's also a DBC category. This meter is capable of measuring DBA or DBC. But while I'm sitting here talking, the DBA, it's over seventy dB.
I served with the Mayor Sandersville on G-4. And they got that big one going in over there, and I think they've already completed one, four of the buildings.
This, this operation.
I'm gonna give him a phone call and see, I don't know if they did the sound barrier stuff. But just then quiz him as far as, do you wish you had done other things?
Right.
And I think that would be a, a good, a good reference because that facility is.
Larger.
What'd we say, seven, eight times bigger than this is projected to be.
I contacted Bill Timmy with ACCG, just inquired it, ACCG, did ACCG have a model ordinance for this? And he said, no, they do not. And he kind of laughed, he said, I have some history, he's originally from, then around Adele. He said, the city of Adele, Adele had two small facilities up until about three years ago. He said, and then within a period of months, both of those facilities picked up and they moved to Texas because of cheaper electricity, is what he understood. But then, and he said, he said, but the I asked him, well, what was the sound level? He said, well, the volume of the sound wasn't that annoying, the problem was the pitch of it, he said, that's what, the constant pitch is what was annoying. But anyway.
I think the, the direction that Steve and I talked about, he got this information, was we should impose a moratorium and a moratorium on, on these for a period of time. And the period of time of that is a reasonable period of time, and a reasonable period of time is defined by different standards in the courts, but it's been upheld to be no more than ninety days. I mean, if you get beyond ninety days, you get into trouble. So if you, like, if you table a motion, you're supposed to say when you're gonna bring it back, sort of thing, theoretically. Same thing here, if you do a moratorium, you're supposed to have a period of time when it's gonna end. It can't be indefinite, because that's not fair. But if, that a moratorium gives you time to make the decision and reasonable, so I would ask the chair to entertain a moratorium. For no more than, up to ninety days, we should say that. Okay. On any, on granting, I guess, a moratorium is on.
I would suggest for permits for a crypto mining facility and also a data processing facility.
What's gonna happen? I thought half of it was in the city.
We can't control what happens in the city.
Yeah, but I can't control, um, we talking specifically that one, you know, I can understand you putting a moratorium for everybody else, but.
Well, that means, that means on that location, they can't build this part of that, so they could just go across to the city if they've got an ordinance in the city. It's not gonna make, it's not gonna make any difference as to us, we're still gonna get the tax base regardless, it's a matter of what we're trying to govern.
The current building out there that I was told they were gonna use first is in the county side. It's on the county side. I don't, I don't know what their expansion plan is.
Well, I think this is gonna be pretty swift on our part, once we make, we're talking about making the trip in the next week or so to go visit the sites, and then we're gonna talk about looking at.
I'd like to go to that, but I couldn't go, I know, we're talking about going this week or next, I couldn't go either of those, but I'd like to take.
There's four members of the planning commission that would like to go visit, so.
Were they going ahead and going?
Well, we still, we're putting things on hold so we can do a little bit more research, and I got Scotty getting with Georgia Power rep to see just what sites are in operation, trying to determine the size of the sites in, trying to schedule, you know, what would be more convenient to go see.
I got a friend, he's the manager at Sandersville. But they also have, they have the one in Bydell, yeah, Statesboro, they have some more, and he had agreed. He's agreed to give us a tour of one of the facilities, um, just to show what it, what it is, but.
Well, I think, you know, why not go to Sand, why not go to the big site, that's what this could potentially turn into. And actually, they say right now it's gonna be small. But what I understand from Georgia Power, and I forget the numbers, but that power electrical substation out there is either twenty megawatt or twenty-five megawatt, I don't remember which one.
I think it was twenty because the project was targeting eighteen, nine to start with, and then nine on the next phase.
And I think the reason they had, the initial phase was nine megawatts. And I think that's a threshold with Georgia Power, if you exceed that, then you get into another, another higher rate schedule for the power.
And they're also observing enough for expansion.
And Georgia Power's got to be sure they, they've got enough to serve existing needs in the community and other potential growth in the community, and not use up all the potential growth for this one project, so. There's a lot of factors going on here.
I was also told that another company is speculating in the city of Bydell in town on thirty acres of the same same deal. Now, we can't control, I know, we have no control over that, but.
Supposedly there is a small facility in the city of Americas.
This is right in the, this one's right out here in the middle of town. It's, it's, I guess it's here.
But I would request a moratorium to give us a little more time to get.
We need a motion in there, right?
Yes, we need a motion.
Do you think we need ninety? Can we go sixty?
Go sixty and then add thirty. But you can't, you can't go ninety, then, you can't cumulatively just keep adding it without getting, you'd probably go ninety and add thirty if you were on the cusp of getting something done. So you'd go sixty, but I, I'm afraid that you're gonna tie your hands. I think the better of practice might be to go ninety and then cut it short.
We can't cut it short.
You don't have to go, wait for ninety days. If you get an ordinance, and I think we'll have, once you go to the, go, go visit the facility, that will alleviate some concerns, or it'll raise new concerns. Which can then make these, these, these things in these ordinances look good or bad, depending on what you think are in the needs of this community. or it'll raise new concerns, which can then make these, these, these things in these ordinances look good or bad, depending on what you think are in the needs of this community. Would it, let me ask about the fifty dBa. Don't the city, you said the city has the same back team like we have?
The city is currently, the draft that I got from Michael, when I went by yesterday to talk to him, he wanted to end, so I don't, I don't know if the city actually adopted it early this month or not. It was on their agenda, I believe. But this is the exact what they, what they were proposing. Now, what our planning commission is proposing is this plus, and I haven't got a copy of it yet, I haven't got a copy of it yet, but plus a requirement for them to put up some, a sound barrier wall around the facility.
And I think that was sort of a conditional, the way, the way we were just cursory reading it, it looked like it could be conditional based on the amount of the decimal that who was measuring it. So I think that was one of the concerns, maybe at Sandersville or something, where they didn't have that part of the ordinance, I don't know. So that was, that was important, I think, we looked into.
And I'm still learning, there's supposedly, initially, these, the, the sound is generated from the electric fans that are required to cool the computer equipment. There is a tremendous amount of computer equipment used in this process. So they're, to cool the computer equipment there, they're currently using fans to blow air. That's what, my understanding is, that's what creates the noise. They, some of the newer facilities are, some of them are using water to cool the computer equipment, which reduces the sound tremendously.
Sandersville is converting over the next six months to the water cooled.
But Bill Toomey with ACCG says the, the water cooled option has gotten the state's interest in their concern about a large volume of groundwater being used. So there may be something coming to that. Now, on a side note, kind of unrelated, but back when Georgia Pacific was in operation, there was a Georgia Pacific particle board plant, and then a Georgia Pacific resins plant. The resin plant manufactured the resin used to make the particle board. It, that process created a lot of heat also. They were, at least early on, they were using water to cool that. They, they, they had a, they had a deep well on site out there, they pumped water, cooled it, and then they discharged it into a ditch, and it went to the creek for years. Then, then they built a water cooling tower that somehow, they would pump the water out of the ground, cool the equipment, and run that hot water through this cooling tower to cool the water back down to be recirculated back around to cool, to not be discharging the water all the time, so. Didn't use much water.
And that infrastructure in the permitting board apparently is still there.
The structure to that, but it's thirty years old, and I'm sure there's more modern ways of doing, doing that, but, you know, there's there's more pieces exposed than what we're aware of. I just would like, I think it'd be, for us to do more deep diligence to, to get a moratorium in place to give us time to research.
So is there a?
Yeah, we, yeah, we can make a motion if we implement a moratorium of sixty days to further review the crypto mining facilities and data processing facilities.
I accept that, Chairman.
Okay, have the mo, motion and second. I thought first they would go from ninety and back down.
He did, but. Well, I thought he said sixty and we could go up.
Either way you want to do it, but, but, but probably just as easy to do ninety and back down.
Because then if you, if we wind up adopting an order for ninety days up, we can terminate the moratorium. It's like, we're a city.
They do what they want.
When you, and he's right, when you order, when, as soon as you have the ordinance in place, be adopted, that automatically lifts the moratorium, because you've now superseded it.
The week after next, I'll, I'll be, I'll take a trip to a plant. I just can't go before then.
Well, I think it, I think the tenor of the motion is that everybody wants to get this done sooner than later, but you don't want to have to come back and redo it and be barred by a day or two, is what I'm kind of getting. So just give it the ninety is what I'm thinking is the best.
So we need to reset motion.
I'll, I'm meeting your motion, huh?
You're going to meet your motion.
I'm making my motion from the sixty days to the ninety days.
Can I second?
Okay, have the motion and second. Do, do we have any other discussion on it before we vote on it? If not, all in favor by the show of hand.
That motion cares.
Chairman, I'd like to request a brief executive session and discuss.
Before, before Steve, before we do that, I got something, I forgot. Can a, a citizen of a county enter work on, enter the road without our permission? Boy, if scraping the road, or put sand on it, or gravel, or whatever, without we being aware of it.
My opinion, no.
They, they don't have the right to do that. They don't have the right to, the maintenance of the roads, this, 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 this commission was originally the Roads and Bridges Commission, in the, in the original language way back in eighteen hundreds, and so this is the one thing we, we do is provide the common transportation on our roads. So the first question is, whose road is it? Is it a private road or is it a public road? And then if it's not a private road and it's a public road, is it a county road versus a city or state road? And if, if the answer is it's a county road, then we have jurisdiction over it, and they need to clear that with the road department. And the road department ought to be very careful about accepting any assistance, um, from a citizen to make sure that it's not, um, that it's up to standard, because we're going to be held to the, the level of that if we allow that repair. But I think it probably goes on from time to time with people's driveways and stuff like that, and so the question is, where do you draw the line on that? And, you know, if, if it's an immediate hazard, you, you know, we, we, we want to be careful on our entire hands, because during the times of storm, people go out there to remove trees, and we want them to, help with that sort of thing, you know?
To cut grass longer, further.
So, I mean, I guess the question is, is it one, one situation that we need to be aware of, or is it a, a common problem is, I guess, the fault? Like, I've answered the best I can answer without getting into any specifics, because I don't know any specifics.
Yeah, I know, I, I know, God damn it. I told him, I said, where did you do that? I got some more. The coffee, you owe what that can't worth? You and everybody else don't want that same assistance. When that road don't get paid by the county, we're going. I did try to use the common sense approach to it, so I guess.
It's probably done more, more than we think.
Yeah, I know, I know, but long as we don't know, I can't swear by it.
Okay, I'd like to request an executive session, personnel.
I make a motion we go into executive session for personnel matter.
I accept it.
Okay, have the motion and second. All in favor by the show of hand. Okay, that motion cares.
This conference will now be recorded.